It seems to me that I've tried long enough to prove to you my love is strong enough.
Just how upset can you get?
How hard to get can you get?
I'd love to get you on a slow boat to China, all to myself alone. Get you and keep you in arms evermore. Leave all your lovers wishing for the faraway shore. Out on the briny, to the moon big and shiny, melting your heart of stone. I'd love to get you on a slow boat to China, all to myself alone.
I'd love to get you... On a slow boat...
Not on a fast, slow boat. You're not gonna take my heart. You're not gonna break my heart.
Alone, I'm gonna make you mine.
You'll have to stand in line.
Get you and I'll keep you in my arms evermore. Leave all your lovers on shore.
Maybe they'd swim to China, to China and back.
Tell them to bring me an envelope. Out on the briny, with a moon big and shiny, melting your heart.
Or maybe we'll stay at home.
Of stone, or is it made of steel?
You'll find its very real.
Seems we're not going on a slow boat to China. Well, let's just say that we won't be there this June. 'Cause whoever heard of the Chinese honeymoon? Whoever heard of the Chinese honeymoon?
Good afternoon, and I'd like to welcome everyone here to our subdivision meeting. We're gonna take just a few minutes, if you'll please indulge us, to introduce our two, two of our three past council members or commission members that have given so much to our commission, and I'm gonna ask the commission here to stand up and we'll present. We've got some plaques. Linda and Lyle, will you stand up? Whereas we, the members of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Planning Commission, acknowledge that the fulfillment of the term of office of Linda Gottfried and Lyle Ayton from the Planning Commission, whereas we wish to take this opportunity to recognize Mrs. Gottfried and Mr. Ayton for their valuable service to the commission from July 13, 2000 to June 30, 2008, for Mrs. Gottfried, and for the same time for Mr. Ayton. Having served on this commission, zoning committee and subdivision, as vice chairman, Ms. Gordon, and Mr. Ayton is serving as commissioner of the subdivision committee. Whereas Mr. and Mrs. Gottfried and Mr. Ayton have been influential in the formation of two comprehensive plan, the Greenbrier Small Area Plan, the Corridors Plan, the Indian Hill Small Area Plan, the Newtown Pike Extension, the South End Park Urban Village Plan, the Residential Infill and Development Study, the Underutilized Property Survey, the Courthouse Area Design Overlay Zone, and the Cadent Town Historic District, and the Greenbrier Neighborhood Character Design Overlay Zone. Mr. Ayton has been influential in the formation of the two comprehensive plan, the Greenbrier Small Area Plan, the Indian Hills Small Area Plan, the Newtown Pike Extension Corridor, the Plan, the South End Plan Urban Village Plan, the Residential Infill and Redevelopment Study, the Underutilized Property Survey, the Courthouse Area Design Overlay Zone, and the Cadent Town Historic District, and the Greenbrier Neighborhood Character Design Overlay Zone. And whereas Mrs. Gottfried and Mr. Ayton have consistently shown a deep concern for the citizens of Fayette County as reflected in their decisions regarding land use and development, and whereas, as members of this commission and the staff feel that the service and guidance contributed by Mrs. Gottfried and Mr. Ayton will be greatly missed by this body, and I can assure you that that's true. Now, where, as, wherefore be it resolved, we, the members of the commission, along with the staff, do hereby express our gratitude to Mrs. Gottfried and to Mr. Ayton for their service to the commission, to the citizens of Lexington Fayette County, and we, Lexington Fayette Urban County Planning Commission and staff, do hereby wish Mrs. Gottfried and Mr. Ayton much happiness and continued success, and ask that they continue to give valuable guidance to the members of this commission, and be it further resolved that this copy of the resolution be presented to Mrs. Gottfried and Mr. Ayton as they also spread upon the minutes, and also spread upon the minutes of the book of the body. And that's it. We are so... I'll give you both an opportunity to say something if you'd like to speak. Linda?
I would just like to thank my colleagues on the Planning Commission, the staff that has been just tremendous, and to all of those who have brought their plans before this commission and their interest in developing and the maintenance of our community. It has really been a pleasure to serve. It's been time-consuming, it's been labor-intensive, but I've enjoyed the opportunity to be able to serve the community, and now I'm looking forward to having some free reading time. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that I've enjoyed being on this side of the bar, and I've been on both sides of the bar. I've been a consultant to the Planning Commissioner and to my clients, and then being on the other side of the bar has given me a much broader perspective on planning. And one thing I'd like to comment on in that regard, I mean, I come from a long way back. I can remember the first planning session I had was over in the other courthouse on Walnut Street, it used to be Walnut Street. In the basement was when the Planning Commission had its first staff, first Planning Commission offices with one staff member, and I think a part-time secretary. That goes way back. I go way back. And I'm still here, but I've enjoyed planning, the process and everything. I've taught planning in university. I have enjoyed being on both sides of the bar, as they say, and I've enjoyed particularly the development of understanding of planning in this community. It's come a long way. I mean, we have people now who understand it better than I do, and a lot better than I do, and it makes it a nice interface with when anything comes up that's community-wide, a community-wide concern in planning, to have that kind of knowledge base for a community. And the other thing I'd like to say is, besides the advancement in the understanding and knowledge of the community, we have a staff that is superb. And I've seen a staff from one man to this kind of staff, the mature, very professional staff that we have here that make, you wouldn't believe the kind of reports that you're able to put out in reviewing cases and projects. It's just, it just makes it very comfortable and very satisfactory that I've been able to serve in whatever capacity that I have. Thank you.
Thank you all, and we'll do our meeting. Okay, we have minutes from the May 8, 2008, June 10, 2008, June 26, 2008, to be considered at this time. Three.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes from the Planning Commission meetings of May 8, 2008, June 12, 2008, and June 26, 2008, be approved.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Posed by a like sign, passed. Are there any postponements or withdrawals at this time?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is John Carmen. On page six, item B, under Development Plan, Cardinal Hill Hospital, we are requesting a one-month postponement.
All right, we requested a one-month proposal for the Cardinal Hill Hospital plan on page six.
B.
What's the date on there?
Your next subdivision meeting, September 11.
Okay.
You in here for motion?
I'm ready for motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for a one-month postponement to the September 11 meeting for DP 2008-79.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Dick Murphy, on page three, item C, Plan 2008-28F, Lakeview Island, Unit 3, The Landings, 2414 Lake Park Road. You may recall, we had a discussion about this at your last meeting. It was location of a sewer line, and we suggested reconfiguring our lots so that we could get it on the, on the properties, which would eliminate the need for a waiver. We have done that, we have met with the staff, and they have tweaked our plan a little bit, but we, I think it's been determined that we do not need a waiver anymore, and no further Planning Commission action is needed. This was our request for a continued discussion item, so for that reason, I am withdrawing our request for a continued discussion item on this matter.
Okay. Does everyone understand the motion? All right. We will now take up the process of a motion to withdraw the...
Continued discussion.
Continued discussion on Plan 2008-28F, Lakeview Island, The Landings.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move a withdrawal of Plan 2008-28-F.
Is there a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Just to clarify, that was the continued discussion, because the plan's already been approved, actually, on that.
So noted.
Getting me a little nervous there.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name's Matt Carter with Vision Engineering. If you were turning the agenda to page six, item 3A, under Development Plans, DP 2008-77, Michael Gentry Property, at this time, we request an indefinite postponement.
Okay, we have had a request for an indefinite postponement on DP 2008-77, Michael Gentry Property at 3292 Richmond Road. The council or commission have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Chairman, I move for indefinite postponement of DP 2008-77, Michael Gentry Property.
All right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Rosalynn Harris. This is Susan Lewis. We are residents of Providence Lane. We are referring to DP 2008-80 on page seven, the Chevy Chase Subdivision, Unit 19, William T. Burke Property. We are asking for a one-month postponement because we've just become aware of some changes in the development plan that are affecting, will be affecting us. Ms. Lewis will go into it in further detail, and we need time to consider those changes.
What it shows is that they have moved the garage from one side of the back property line over to the property line and turned on the side on our property, which will result in the building of the primary structure and the garage going all the way down our property side on the one side that we face out with the loss of sunlight, ventilation, and any kind of a view that we could have had. And we just learned that the plan, it's not on the plan that was submitted, it's a change.
Okay, there is a request to postpone... To postpone DP 2008-80, Chevy Chase Subdivision, Unit 19, located at 1136 Providence Lane. Does anybody else have any discussions or...
Mr. Chairman, I'm Dick Murphy. I represent Mr. William Burke, who's the owner of the property. We oppose that. The plan that is before you is essentially the same plan that was acted upon by the Board of Adjustment three weeks ago. The garage is in essentially the same location. This plan does move it, it was six feet off the line, this moves it to two feet off the line. We can discuss that, but other than that, it's the same plan that was approved by the Board of Adjustment three weeks ago, after full notice, and I think the same people were present at the meeting at that time. So this time, we would oppose that. I think the time has run out on the, we've, this has been postponed a couple of times already as well, and I think the time's run out on it, too.
Okay, commission, what's your pleasure? Do you want to go ahead and postpone this, or do you want to go ahead and hear the hearing today?
I think we have to hear it.
I would concur. Let's go ahead and hear the proposal during the time in which we would hear such things, to hear the petitioners on both sides.
Second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Posed by a like sign. Okay, we will do the hearing today.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Andy Holmes with Midwest Engineering, on page eight, item G, DP 2008-104, Red Mile Square. We'd like to have a one-month postponement to the September 11 meeting.
All right, there's been a request for a one-month postponement, which would make that September the 11th. For DP 2008-106, Red Mile Square, Track D, Parcel 3, 1151 Unity Drive. Is there a, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for a one-month postponement of DP 2008-104 to the September 11 meeting.
All right, there's been a motion and a second to postpone DP 2008-104. All in favor, proceed.
If I may, did you ask if anyone in the audience had any comments as to the postponement?
Is there anyone in the audience that has a comment or would like us not to postpone this? If not, we'll call for the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Posed by a like sign. September 11th.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Rory Kaylee with EA Partners. I'm gonna try to postpone several here for you. First page, first item, Plan 2008-71P, Hampton Springs, request a one-month postponement to the September 11 hearing.
All right, there is a request for a one-month postponement for Plan 2008-71P, Hampton Springs, located at 4574 Harrisburg Road. Is there anyone else to speak in the audience for or against this? I mean, is that all right? We can, we'll do it? All right. Anybody else? All right. Mr. Chairman, for the record, could the gentleman approach the microphone and identify himself?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Keith Messenger. I reside at 2460 English Station Drive, and I'm representing Mr. and Mrs. J. L. Wanda Hatter, who are the owners of English Station Development Company, of which this particular property came up about 11 years ago, and are attempting to access a private access easement across the Hatters property through English Station Drive to do it, and there was a court case at that time that was settled that reversed the commission's decision at that time, and I just wish to bring that information before the commission and I have given it to staff today. But I will be here September 11th.
Okay, I think there, do you all want to... It's September 11th, we will have the hearing and have, let's do your opposition at that time. Okay, thank you all. All right, is there a motion to postpone Plan 2007-71P, Hampton Springs?
Mr. Chairman, move postponement of 2008-71P till September 11.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay.
On page two, bottom of page two, top of page three, it's two final record plaques. Both of these are the Thomas Communications. They are Plans 2008-24F and 2008-25F, Units 1C and 1D respectively. Request a one-month postponement on these two plans to September 11th.
All right, we have a request for a postponement to September 11th for Plan Number 2008-24F, Thomas Communications, Unit 1C, Walnut Grove Estates, and for Plan Number 2008-25F, Thomas Communications, Unit 1D, Walnut Grove Estates. Does anyone, is there any in the audience that would like to question this? If, if not, I will entertain a motion that we postpone this until September 11th.
Mr. Chairman, I move for postponement to September 11th of Plan 2008-24F and Plan 2008-25F till our September 11th meeting. Second.
All right. Everyone understand the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by a like sign. All right, September 11th.
On page four, item E, this is Plan 2008-76F, Bogie Estate Lot 1, request a one-month postponement to the September 11th meeting.
All right, there's been a request for a one-month postponement for Plan 2008-76, Bogie Estates Lot 1, located at 5846 Old Richmond Road. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this? If not, the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for a one-month postponement of item 2008-76F, Bogie Estate.
All right. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by a like sign.
And on page seven, item D, it's DP 2008-88, Beaumont Farm, Unit 1, Section 1, also request a one-month postponement to September 11th.
Okay, there's been a request for DP, for Plan 2000, excuse me, DP 2008-88, Beaumont Farms, Unit 1, Section 1, located at 3100 Beaumont Center Circle. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to say anything? If not, I entertain a motion from the commission.
Mr. Chair, I move for a one-month postponement till the September 11th meeting for DP 2008-86, or 88, I'm sorry, Beaumont Farm, Unit 1, Section 1A.
All right, been motion made in second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by a like sign.
One more. On page nine, this is... On page nine, this is under staff items. It's the final subdivision plan, Plan 2008-102C, Guest Family Partnership, request a one-month postponement to September 11th hearing.
It's right under staff items. There's been requests for a one-month postponement to September 11th for Plan Number 2008-102C, Guest Family Partnerships, located at 40950 Charlesburg Road. Is there anyone in the audience that has anything that would like to say? If not, I'll entertain a motion from the Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move for postponement of Plan 2008-102C, Guest Family Partnership.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by a like sign.
Thank you.
At this time, OJT on-the-job training is over, and I'm going to pass back the gavel to Randall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr., excuse me, thank you, Mr. Day. I want to say thank you for filling in for me. The joys of travel, you just don't always catch the right flight when you need it. And I'm sorry I missed Mr. Ayton and Ms. Godfrey's presentation, but did get a chance to speak with him in the, in the corridor just a few minutes ago. Okay, at this time, are there any other postponements or withdrawals that the Commission needs to consider at this time? Okay, seeing none, I guess we will move next into our consent agenda. Land subdivision items, we do have a consent agenda in front of us. On the TAM sheet, there appears to be a number of plans, and at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Sally to run through the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you.
Members of the Commission, good afternoon. There are eight items that can appear on your consent agenda this afternoon. The first is a final subdivision plan recommended for approval by your subdivision committee. This item appears on page four, it's item F, Plan 2008-104F, a final record plat amendment for Hollywood Terrace subdivision Lot 1, and a portion of Lot 2 and 3. There are four items recommended for reapproval by your subdivision committee under final subdivision plans. The first three of those items appear on page four and five, that'd be item 4G, item 5H, page five, item H, and page five, item I. Those are three subdivision plats for portions of 2450 Georgetown Road, Plan 2005-173F, Plan 2005-174F, and Plan 2005-175F, all different units of Unit 4 of Belmont Farm. The next item appears on page five, item J, of your regular meeting agenda. This is a final subdivision plat, Plan 2007-82F, for Sharkey Property, Unit 3, for property located at Town Square Park. There are three final development plans recommended for conditional approval by your subdivision committee that can be on the consent agenda. The first appears on page seven, item E, DP 2008-102, Estes Property Lot 1. This is for property at 3294 Richmond Road. The next item appears on page seven, item F of your regular agenda, DP 2008-103, final development plan for Care Inn of Lexington, also known as White and Curlis Property, Track 3, property located at 2770 Palumbo Drive. Final item on your consent agenda is also a final development plan. It appears on page eight, item H, of your regular meeting agenda. This would be DP 2008-105, and a development plan for Ovington and Ragland, also known as Harold's Car Wash. This is for property at 2632 Richmond Road. Mr. Chairman, unless there are any requests from the Commission or audience to remove plans from this agenda, these items can be considered on your consent agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sally. You've heard the presentation of the consent agenda by Mr. Sally. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to hear, see the, hear any of these applications presented on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Commission, are there any plans on the consent agenda that you would like to see heard today? Okay, seeing none. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion for acceptance of the consent agenda as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move for acceptance of the consent agenda as Mr. Sally presented to us.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll move into our full hearing items, and we'll give the staff a moment to get set up for that. I've lost my place, I guess, in my agenda here, but perhaps Mr. Sally can direct me to our first one.
I hope I have the right spot marked, Mr. Chairman. The bottom of page three, Plan 2008-44F.
Okay.
Hi, ma'am. I apologize, I did not have the right location. It's on page two of your agenda, item B, Plan 2006-75P. We'll have a short presentation on that plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sally. We'll take a moment while staff sets up.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, the next item on your agenda is on page two. It is Plan 2006-75P, preliminary subdivision plan. It is located off Winchester Road in the Patchen Wilkes development. The Charleston Street, the drive that is the frontage, runs out and connects us to Charles, uh, to Winchester Road, thank you, I'll get it out. It's close to the Crawford School at the back end of the property. We have other subdivision proposals in this subdivision, in this area, and then we have the commercial development closer to the Winchester Road section, although I know it's difficult to see. By the vicinity map, you can see that this is the residential area located towards the rear of the property. There are 143 single-family lots served by a street system, which you can see here, along with an alley system to serve the rear of all these lots. This was a development that was presented to you and approved in a neo-traditional style. This plan is back before you for reapproval. You did reapprove it once before. You can see from your agenda that those were standard conditions. There is one, however, that goes with this. This, too, has been approved prior by this body, and that is your, the waiver request on blue that you see before you. The key to this waiver request and the reason for it was to be consistent with the neo-traditional design that was proposed for this development by the developer with your original integrated design that they had, and it's for the size of these streets and for the turning radiuses. That is the key, and it's to keep them small and keep them narrow. And this, of course, was a well-discussed topic by staff during the course of the original submission and the review of this plan, and subsequently with the waiver request as well. But that, again, is the intent. So you can see these connections in here. These are highlighted in red because it was, in fact, the area of concern that staff had were these turning radiuses for the provision of services. Again, that was, that was discussed quite heavily and worked out with other members of the government, and you can see before you, again, on this handout, that the waiver was recommended for approval. And of course, we still recommend this waiver for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any questions for Mr. Martin? I did have one question, I guess. So you're saying that fire and sanitation have accepted this request for
Yes, sir.
modification geometries?
Yes, sir. It was, and it was a topic of much discussion with those entities.
Gotcha. Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions?
I've got one. Tom, this is in keeping with the rest of that development?
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's no tighter or no, no different than the rest of the development?
It is consistent with the rest of the development. Yes, sir.
Mr. Penn, to answer your question, I'm not sure any other portions of Patchen Wilkes have received waivers, with the exception of the area on the opposite end of the property where there were alleys created behind. I think there were some waivers associated with those alleys, but I'm not sure the street systems anywhere else in Patchen Wilkes have had similar waivers granted.
I guess I was under the impression that that tight turn radius functioned as an alley. It does or does not?
I would, I would say they're similar. I would have to turn to the applicant's representative to verify that's their intent.
Okay.
I have a question on, on the alleys. Even though they're maintained by the Homeowners Association, are, are those going to be public roads or, or the alleys?
Well, it is my understanding that this is a public street system, but not the alleyways.
Not the alleyways.
Right. Yes, sir. The homeowners association, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Phillips?
Tom, we approved this back in 2006 and then again in 2007 with this waiver?
Yes, ma'am.
We did. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Martin? Petition?
Rory Kaylee with EA Partners. We're in agreement with the 14 conditions. We request approval, and yes, the alleys are consistent. We've done, Unit 1 is up near Winchester Road. That all, I think all but two lots are served by an alley system. We did have some sort of waivers with those streets because we, some places you have a big greens in the middle of it, and the sidewalks varied with that right of way as well. In this case, it's set up to more as your neo-traditional, your Charleston look, so we were bringing the houses and everything more to the street frontage and allowing for the alley systems in the rear.
Charleston, South Carolina, right?
Yes. That's the plan.
Charleston, West Virginia would have a different look.
We don't have enough hills for that.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any other questions for Mr. Kaylee? All right, it appears we have, it appears 14 conditions provided. We grant approval for reapproval for the waiver, as well as reapproval of the plan. This is Plan 2006-75P. Is there anyone in the audience like to, that's here that'd like to speak to this application? Okay, thank you. All right, staff, do you have anything additional you want to add? Mr. Martin?
No, sir. I think Mr. Kaylee is correct. I do recall some waivers on the utility strips in the other section.
Okay. All right, okay, at this time, I'll ask the Commission if they have any questions, comment, motion to make.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval and reapproval of 2006-75P, and also move reapproval of the waiver.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for reapproval of Plan 2006-75P, as well as granting the waiver on the blue sheet for 2006-75P. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is on page three, I believe. Is that correct?
As, we're going to turn to page three, and at the bottom of page three, you'll see the plan for 2008-44F, Highmount subdivision, Unit 1, Block A, Lot 17. This is a final record plat for a piece of property located at 2932 Candlelight Way. The property is located between, off of Mount, Old Mount Taber Road, between Takes Creek Road and Alumni Drive. The purpose of this is to subdivide a single lot that has a duplex on it going down the common wall, so we're trying to create two individual lots. There was some question, when this, when the house was designed and built, there was just one single door that you would go into, and then there were doors inside this area that'll allow you to go into each side of the duplex. We had questions and concerns about the fact you only had one door, so they created a pedestrian easement that'll, the sidewalk in the front that comes up and then goes into that, if you want to call lobby area, so that both people can get into their different If you want, we kind of revised a couple of the conditions that were requested, and if you look at the pink sheet, there's 18 conditions. We were, 17 was to discuss the maintenance of the access, pedestrian easement, and then 18 to denote the firewall separation between the units. With this, the staff and the subdivision committee recommended approval with these 18 conditions located on the pink sheet.
Thank you, Ms. Schulte. Any questions for Ms. Schulte this time? Thank you. Okay, is petitioner present?
Mr. Chairman and the members of the Commission, my name's Don White, and I'm here on behalf of the petitioners, and I would just ask that you accept the staff's recommendations.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. White at this time? Ms. Phillips?
How wide, Mr. White, how wide is the sidewalk easement per property owner?
It's, I think it's three feet on either side or four feet. It's, it's outside of the sidewalk. They went out and measured it down the sidewalk and then took it outside of the sidewalk. And I think initially, we were talking about three feet on either side, and they may have taken it out to four, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. White at this time? Okay, is, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this application? Okay, you've heard staff's presentation. Petitioner is in agreement with staff's revised recommendation on the pink sheet. There are 18 conditions. Staff has recommended approval. At this time, the Chair will entertain any questions, comments, and/or motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of Plan 2008-44F with the, I guess, 16 conditions, deleting number 16 and 17 as submitted.
No, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Revised that, 17 has been revised, and so it would be 17 conditions recommended by staff.
Actually, there's 18 of yours.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, gosh, just changed, changes in 16, changes in 17 and 18, so we do have 18 conditions by staff.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Plan 2008-44F with the 18 conditions on, on the pink sheet. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Okay, our next item, it appears it's on page six, is that correct? Did I miss? Okay, our next item, it appears it's on page six, is that correct? Did I miss?
Top of page seven, I believe, Mr. Chairman.
Top of seven, okay. Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. The next item on your agenda appears on page seven. This is DP 2008-80, Chevy Chase subdivision, Unit 19, Lot 7. This is for property located at 1136 Providence Lane. The property is located between Duke Road and Romney Road. This is an R2 lot that was recently rezoned. The applicant is requesting to build a duplex with a garage to the rear. I'm going to walk you through the three plans that we've seen. This was the original submission. Show the garage in the back right corner, the two units, and the drive down this side. After that, on the, this was submitted on the, I believe, the 10th. The plan you see up here is the board of adjustment filing that was approved on July the 25th. The difference being, you can see the garage in this corner, two enclosed carports, revisions to the building lines at 22 feet and 25 feet, six feet side yard and rear yard for this garage and carport. The addition of the easements, as well as some additional easement information here that was not shown on the plan at this time. This morning, we received a revised plan that brought the plan closer to what the board of adjustment approved, moving the garage to this back left corner, but it closed the gap on the side yard and rear yard from six feet to two feet on the side and the rear. The remainder of the plan is as shown on the board of adjustment plan that was approved on the 25th. The subdivision committee had previously recommended postponement subject to nine conditions. We have, on your yellow sheet, revised conditions for approval noting the addition of four additional conditions. And I would also direct you to the white land use restriction sheet we gave you, which also denotes some of the requirements that the board of adjustment placed on their approval. The additional conditions are to document the compliance with 15-6A regarding the size of the accessory structures. It's a bit unclear, and we need it denoted and documented as to whether the new structure shown back there with the enclosed carports meets that portion of the ordinance. Condition number 11 is to identify the building line at 22 feet from right of way, per the board of adjustment approval of their dimensional variance. 12 is to denote the conditions of approval and date the board of adjustment approval on the plan. It's not on the plan, that is, as you see on the land use restriction, one of the conditions for approval. Number 13 is to relocate the garage and carports to the six-foot setback from the property line, per the site plan approval from the, from the board of adjustment. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. So I, I take it that when subdivision committee recommended postponement, the utility, utility pole, landscape buffer, and the required notice was addressed?
The issue with the utilities, we had no easement information, and there was still some debate about whether or not there was going to be guy wires in the location of where the drive was shown. They've taken care of that information, as far as I'm concerned, from the, the board of adjustment. And I will have to let, I believe, Mr. Murphy tell you if the notice requirement has been met for those neighbors.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Taylor. Are there any other questions for Mr. Taylor at this time? Mr. Penn?
Does the plan show the 22-foot right of way that the board of adjustment approved?
It shows the 22-foot setback.
Setback, I'm sorry.
From this building?
Correct. The plan shows there.
Correct. It shows 22 there and it is 25 there. They have an incorrectly noted 15-foot building line that is, per the zone, a 30-foot building line, which they varied through the board of adjustment to the 22 and the 25.
Ms. Phillips?
That side yard setback, the board of adjustment approved six-foot side yard for the conjoined carport garage, and now the plan shows two-foot?
That's, that's correct. The plan, the note of the condition says that the property will be developed in accordance with the submitted site plan, so we take that to mean the side yard requirements, or the setbacks for the garage as well.
What is the required, the district's setback requirement?
Article 15-6 deals with location, height and size of accessory buildings. It's a, it's a foot and a half for garages is what's required for accessory structures.
Wow.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Taylor. Any other questions for Mr. Taylor at this time? Okay, thank you. Petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, I'm Dick Murphy. I represent William Burke, who's the owner of the property. Mr. Burke is here with me today in the fourth row, along with Doug Walton, who will be actually building the property, who's next to him. Chaz Hyde, a planner, is with me, and Mike Robbins is here, who's Foster Roland, our designer. Just wanted to give you a little background on this. The, you had heard this as a zone change some months ago, from R1C to R2. You know, we had to do R2 because we couldn't attach two townhouse units. We had to attach three, and all, went through all that. The council did approve this unanimously a month or two ago before they went on break. We were aware all along we'd have to go to the board of adjustment for a variance on the front yard because R2 has a 30-foot setback, R1T has a 10-foot setback. If I could use, I've got a version of that we used at the board of adjustment, if I could put it on the overhead here. The, what we ended up doing was, we had asked for 15, and that, that, that's 15-foot building line is not what we got. We got 22 feet at the board of adjustment, but we had shown ones next to us, the left, or the unit on the far left has 15.7, and that steps back to 18.6. And then with our plan, we stepped ours, this one further back to 22, and then the right one here goes to 25, and then there's a 30-foot building line on the R1C property. Although we mentioned that all houses that have been sold out there have been converted into townhouses in the past, so we do step this down along there instead of what we had originally asked for, which was to go back to their setbacks here. We, we have pulled it back. Now, the board of adjustment, at the board of adjustment, we showed a, this is the plan we submitted to the board of adjustment. And I think there'll be an issue this afternoon about the garage, carport setbacks and everything. We showed at the board, we'd have six feet, this was shown at six feet, same as the house, and six feet here. And the, what we've submitted to you right now shows two feet here and two feet here on the property line. The, let me show you a, show you a photograph here. We're going to be doing on this property similar townhome units to what's out there already, two-story brick. There's 11 townhome units along this stretch of Providence Lane. There's seven of them front Providence, and they're bisected by Duke Road there, and then four go down Duke Road. We're going to do similar to these. These are the ones right next door to us. The ones on the other side of Duke have front entry garages in the townhomes. We're not going to do front entry garages. We're going to do like these are. And the ones going down Duke Road are, are similar to this as well. And there's an aerial photograph of here. This is a black and white, I don't know if the staff, if you all still have that color photograph or not, but... This is the, as, this is a black and white copy of a color photograph, and if you can raise the contrast on that just a little bit, because it shows the, well, you can see the, this is the house which was torn down. This is our property right here on Providence. These are the two townhomes next to us, right here. And again, we're going to be stepped back and then stepped back, going through here. And then this is the, I guess there's a patio or deck on the Lewis house, and back here is the garage. You can see it's right near our property line, the, the existing garage. Our garage would be sitting here as well against their garage. It may extend up a little further than theirs is. But what we, I was talking with, Mr. Burke and I were talking in the hallway before the meeting, what, what we would propose to do is to, we had pulled this back from, going back to the first one, the board of adjustment one, if you all could, first exhibit that I had. Yeah. There we go on the brightness. Thank you. So the, the neighboring garage is back in this corner as well. What we had proposed, what we can do is we, we showed two feet here and two feet here. We pulled it back because that would give a more view through there. So what we'd propose is we'd keep it as, at two feet, where we're showing right here, excuse me. Right here, where we're showing two feet along this back property line, but go ahead and observe the six-foot setback along the neighbor's property line here. That would maximize the view and the space for the neighbor over here. On that, if we move this, pull this back to six feet, where we had it at the board of adjustment, but if we pull it down to the two here toward the back, that'll give more view shed and more openness through here on that. So that's what we would propose, to modify what we have, to pull our garage back to six feet from the sideline and leave it at two feet from the rear line. As you all know, under the ordinance, we're entitled to one and a half feet along both sidelines, but this would be six and two on the bottom here, on that. Now, questionably, on the original development plan, we had showed it in the back here. This is, this is the one, this is based upon our preliminary subdivision plan. KU has asked for an easement in this corner, 15 by 15. There's apparently a transformer on that pole right there, a big transformer. They want a 15 by 15-foot easement. We cannot put the garage here. We cannot fit this garage in the location along the, the back here, so that's why we rotated it this way. It also makes it a little easier movement in and out, so everybody's encouraged to come out facing Providence, not backing onto Providence. So it's a safer, safer arrangement as well on there. There was a little discussion about utilities. There is a utility line, electric line overhead going along our east property line here, and we've had various discussions. There's been a lot of confusion about that. Our probably, we'll do whatever KU tells us, obviously on that, through the building permit process. Our desire probably would be to leave the existing line exactly where it is and, and observe all the electrical codes that we have to do that. Barring that, there's been some discussion about burying the lines or putting the lines higher. That'll have to be resolved at the building permit when everybody sees exactly where the house will be in relation to the lines, and we have to observe KU's electrical code on that. There's no, no way around that. Obviously, we'd prefer to leave things just the way they are out there on the electrical line. So, so that's where we are on the electrical line. The, again, this, we did do the notification, the zone change, we required to notify adjoining neighbors. As you may recall, in June, we postponed that because we had not given 14 days' notice. We did that, but it wasn't 14 days before the June meeting, so we postponed it to July and got postponed again. Everybody's here. Everybody was at the board of adjustment on that, so that's where we're at on it. And again, when you did the zone change, we pointed out the nature of Chevy Chase and the nature that all these houses have been converted to these townhome units, and we want to do something just right in keeping with what's out there. These have been very well accepted in Chevy Chase, fit in very nicely. Alan Foster, who heads Foster Roland, actually built the eight units, the four next to us and the four going down Providence Lane, he built those, and so he's doing the layout on these for Mr. Burke to be extremely similar to the ones that are already there. We're very pleased with the design and pleased with the process that has gone on so far. So, again, we feel with the modification, we'll be pulling this back from the neighbor's line. We'll be giving them visibility through there, and we do comply with all setback requirements and all the requirements of the zoning ordinance on this. So we hope very much that you'll vote in favor of it, and we'd be, like to respond to any questions that may come up.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Mr. Cravens?
Yeah. What is a enclosed carport? Is that a garage without a door?
Well, there's no door on it. I don't know if it'll be enclosed on the other sides or not. Mr. Walton may be able to tell me on that, or if we've decided. There won't be a door on the front. I don't know what kind of walls we'll have on the sides, and I'm not sure that's been decided yet, has it? He's nodding his head no, so.
It has walls on the side or it doesn't?
No, pardon?
Is it wall, does it have walls all the way around it, or is it just?
Is it garage? Is it all brick?
Mr. Walton, can you come forward, please? Thank you, sir.
I'm Doug Walton with Mr. Burke. The carport, probably the back of it will be brick, and the side will be open to the patio. It'll be...
Same way on the bottom one?
Yeah. There'll be brick all the way across the back, you can see there, and then the side will be open to the patio right there with the post holding it there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walton. Ms. Phillips, do you have a question?
On the board of adjustment plan, as well as on the leftmost plan, I see there are two trees indicated. Will those trees remain intact, and I wondered if they're required to be maintained?
We're required to show existing trees, and we also have to do the tree canopy. I'm not sure we're going to be able to maintain those. Those are exist, excuse me. These two you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Here and here. I'm not sure if we'll be able to maintain these two or not.
I'm not sure. I don't remember the way we said ahead on this, whether it be a six-foot or...
Yeah. My, my other question was, this area is, is being proposed, being studied for an ND1 overlay, and this property would fall within the boundaries of that, of that overlay district. And I don't know if you would know this, Mr. Murphy or staff, what the side and rear setbacks will be once that overlay comes on board, and would this construction comply?
I'm not sure whether the construction would comply because we're looking at a site plan versus, say, elevation drawings. I'm not aware that there are any yard requirements proposed for change in the ND1 overlay other than to the rear yard, and that is a provision that would apply to the principal structure. There are restrictions proposed to the garages. I believe, I'm not sure if this garage would meet the 700-foot limit under that or not. It would be very close, I think, at best.
I would point out that overlay requires rear parking, as we are proposing here, and I think we're complying with most all of the requirements there. And of course, those have not been enacted yet. I mean, they're not, not binding, not enforceable at this point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any other questions for Mr. Murphy? Okay, I believe we do have someone that wanted to speak to this. Did I? I guess we'll take it for those that willing to speak in favor of this first. I guess we'll take it for those that willing to speak in favor of this first and then those that are in opposition. So, doesn't appear there's anyone in favor of this proposal. We will take those wishing to speak in opposition.
I'm Susan Chestnut Lewis at 1134 Providence Lane. And we do welcome the addition of the townhouses. We think it will be a good plan. I know when they were changing with the BOA, changing their setback, they wanted fifteen feet and got the 22 feet. But what they were talking about was that they felt that the townhouses should conform to the townhouses that are adjoining and already there. And in agreement and supportive of that, the garage, all the garages and adjoining townhomes are set back at the rear property line like they had it here. And so, all the townhouses have the garages at the back property line placed in that way. And I know that there's an easement here, but they can just move the garage over here and the other parking places there. None of the other townhomes have carports. So, they can just repark it like they had it here. That's what we have. We have one car garage and there's like a asphalt section where you park your second car. So, it's not like the proposed garage or not like the proposed carport. But the way that that is, my house is.
If you could take the microphone. Thank you.
My house is right here, and we have one open side that goes right down here along this way. And so, and I have one window that's like right there. So, if they do the garage set that way with enclosed in the back carports, that's just going to be like one big, long, tall, brick building all the way down. And if they turn the garages like everybody else has, and we've got that sort of like open feeling in the back, like you can look all the way down to the end of Duke and you can look back that way, too. And I actually think the people who move in here would prefer it that way, too. I know I would. I'd rather have the air circulation and see something besides a brick wall. And they would have the same view, too. They would be looking into our area and we'd be looking in that way. And I just think that would be nicer and healthier and give more sunlight and more air and more view. So, that, that's my only request would be that they please just go back to this. And if they have to, like because of the easement, just put the garage part here. And we all have no trouble backing out. There's plenty of room to back your car out and then pull out. I do it every day, so it isn't hard to do. But anyway, so, we would just ask that they, as they wanted to conform with their setback with the other homes, that they also conform in the back, too, and follow that conformity.
Thank you.
I just wanted to support Susan Lewis in that and, and ask for a postponement in that regard. I was at the Board of Adjustment meeting on July 25th, and there was no discussion of this change. We talked about the change from a 15 to a 22-foot setback reflected even in the plan that I had up until last week. There was no reflection of this change in the placement of, of the garage. So, we haven't even had a chance to consider, you know, to look at that. And what I understand, just from the language itself, is that, that the plan is to match the plan that is submitted to the Planning Commission. The exact wording of the approval states that the property shall be developed in accordance with the submitted development plan, date dated 7/25/08. And that has not been the case. So, we feel that we just need more time for these considerations. And I also, on the other side, on 1140 Providence side, would appreciate more clarification on the part either of the engineer or the attorney about what is happening with the utilities. There's just a lot of ambiguity around that. And up until, actually up until this morning, there were people coming to our home at, from Kentucky Utilities and saying that they had been sent by, you know, the developer and, you know, with no clear idea of what that was all about. So, I really would like some clarification about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
The person that you just heard from is Mrs. Butler that lives over on the right-hand side. My name is Jeff Duncan. I live at 423 Cochrane Road. I am the president of Chevy Chase Neighborhood Association. I was asked to speak here due to the fact, and the neighbors on the other side and the gentleman, Mr. Burke and I, have been working on this together. It's just that here recently, because of the garages being placed where they are, they were not aware of that. That was not brought up at the last BOA meeting, so this is all a surprise to them. Also, it was just now indicated that the trees on these plans are on the Mr. Burke's property. Actually, I do not believe they are. I think they're actually shown inaccurate. And I think both neighbors want to keep their trees. So, we would like to keep, and as you know, with the, we're working on this ND1, but we'd like to keep some uniformity in our neighborhood. And it would be, I think it would behoove us all to, and I'm not big on postponements, but work this out on this garage so that there is some kind of uniformity all the way. Because we don't know that Mrs. Butler might, Mr. and Mrs. Butler might move and that be developed also as, as a townhouse. If you approve this now, that does set precedence, which kind of throws things into a little bit of a squirrely type of situation. So, maybe better to, to look at this a little bit more and see what, what you all think. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Okay. Is there any other, any other, any other comment from the audience with regards to this?
I have to speak to this.
Uh, uh, what?
Mike Robbins.
Excuse, excuse me, Mr. Robbins. Ms. Robbins?
Yes, Mr. Robbins.
Mr. Robbins? Mr. Robbins? Mr. Robbins? Excuse me, sir. Are you speaking in opposition of this?
I'm, I'm not speaking in opposition. I need to respond to what my friend Jeff Duncan said.
Okay. Can, can we work that with the petitioner and, I mean, Mr. Murphy? Can we? I, I'm trying to keep this consistent with, in favor as well as opposed, and we need to, to keep it in that context, so. All right? Anyone else who wants to speak in opposition to this? Okay. Seeing none, we have rebuttal from petitioner.
What Mike wants to say is that he stands behind the accuracy of their survey, and they have, they have done ground survey work and have located the trees. They've identified on that pro, that plat, trees planted as on Burke's property. I know there's been issues back and forth and arguments about where fences are and that sort of thing. It appears clear that one of the Butler's fences is actually on our property, a few inches. The tree is on our property. Everybody has been making claims one way or the other. We are the ones who have done the survey and paid to do the survey and, and located where these things are and the trees. Mike and Mr. Burke and we stand behind the survey, which they have done there on the site, and there has been no survey work which would contest that. I want to also give you a little information about the garage. If you could show the top photograph and, and that set of two that I gave you. You can see, this is our property. This was a few months ago for the zone change, but you can see the, the garage on the Lewis property next to us. You can see their driveway coming down and their garage, which is very close to our property line. It's the one with basketball goal on it there. Property line goes right up the side there. And I'm going to show you the, the development plan for the Lewis property. If I can make sure I get the right one here. This is the approved development plan for the property next door to us. I think it was, I can't remember the year, 1980 sometime, but it is a signed approved development plan for the property next door to us. And you can see, this is the location of the garage on that property. Now, I was scaling this off during the discussion. This point to here is seven feet. You can see they've got a detention basin showing surrounding their garage. I'm not sure if that's actually there or not, but this, this dimension is seven feet. Now, the dimension from the back of the property line to the front of the garage is about, is 30 feet as I scale it off. So, seven feet there, 30 feet there. Now, if we can go back to ours, which we filed today, now as I mentioned to you.
Move this back to six feet. Six feet more across, six feet more across. Just compared to seven feet on that side, very comfortable. Our measurement from the back of the property line up to here, the garage wall, is about 32 feet compared to there. So, the bulk and mass and location of our garage.
Thank you. Well, excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is, is almost identical to the garage next door. Now, we do add another 10 feet with this carport here with a wall. Now, Mr., I was also talking to Mr. Walton during the break about that, and he, he had told you that this would be a brick wall here and open here. Now, we were doing that because we thought it would be more attractive to have the brick wall, especially since their garage comes up right to there. But we can do that, he said he could do that open if that would be better because that would give him more view. Now, regardless of whether the garage is oriented this way or this way, it's going to be about the same mass. And regardless, you're going to be able to park a car in here, whichever way it is. Having the garage this way removes the visibility of the activity of the cars coming in and parking in the garage from the park property next to us. If we have it located this way, all the maneuvering and the car opening and that stuff would be much more visible to the property over here. I just don't see a difference with the balking and the mass, especially since their garage is right here. Their driveway comes right down our property line right here. We probably have more activity from their cars than they have from our cars here. But this does remove the activity of our cars from them, and we can, and so we can leave that open. There's an open wall, so there's more light and visibility. We're doing the brick because we thought it would be better on here. Probably open will be cheaper for my folks to do anyway. So, we can leave that open. Again, move this six feet away. Keep it open, keep that open, have brick here, and the balking and the mass is just about the same. So, I think we're entitled to have some design of our own on this. It's very little on this. It's going to be like the next one, just the way we tilt the garage. And given the fact we have this easement right here and just can't fit it over on that side there.
Are those, is that all your rebuttal, Mr. Murphy?
Yeah. The garages are only visible to the neighbors, and we think we've done this the least visible way to the Lewis's by doing it this way. And I think that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. We have citizen rebuttal at this time. You can come forward, Ms. Butler.
I just had two quick points, and I appreciate the time. One is irrespective of what the changes are, it's the fact procedurally that we were not made aware of these changes in time to really consider them. And by the council's or the commission's own kind of rules, this is something that we needed to know about or to be aware of. The second thing in terms of the trees, we have never challenged the boundaries. And I know this isn't a time or, or the, the context in which you talk about the boundaries, but we've never disputed the Alan Foster boundaries at all. We're just asking that the developer actually respect his surveyor's own boundaries himself. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Staff, you have rebuttal at this time?
Clarify, for Ms. Phillips, she'd asked about the size of the garage. The portion that is fully enclosed is just under 400 square feet, 18 by 21 roughly, not including the two sides, which don't count towards the building areas and is how they're not fully enclosed.
Thank you, Ms. Could you, could you point that out, what you just said, Mr. Taylor, on the site plan, just so we're all clear?
This area scales off at 18 by 21, 21 by 18. That comes out to roughly 378 square feet. Doesn't enclo, uh, count these two areas for the enclosed carports as they're not fully enclosed, as a not buildable area.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we will close this portion of the hearing and turn it over to the commission to, for any comments. We have a revised staff recommendation. We also have, I guess, the conditions is listed in the Board of Adjustment that identifies the 22-foot setback. On the yellow sheet, we have revised recommendations. It now staff recommends approval with 13 conditions. Subdivision Committee had recommended postponement with three items to be addressed. It appears that what was presented today, those items had been responded to. So, at this time, the chair will turn it over to the commission for any comments and/or
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I, I would agree with Mr. Murphy on the, the way the garage is turned. It, it blocks the views of the cars and all the activity. It gives them a nicer barrier to the unit next door and also from the units inside. When you look out, being that those are two-story, that would help block the view of the cars from the other units. So, with that, I'd like to move approval of DP 2008-80 with a six-foot side yard and a two-foot rear yard.
Based on the revised yellow sheet here, second?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Okay. Our next item on the agenda appears to be the release and call of performance bonds and letters of credit. We have a white memo here dated August 14th, releasing call of bonds. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we release the call of bonds.
We have a motion and second for releasing call of bonds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Sally, I'm sorry, I think I went out of order. I didn't see anything else on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, this is your meeting. That's not a problem at all. There is one subdivision item remaining on the bottom of page eight.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
That's very efficient agenda management, getting that taken care of. There is an addendum, by the way, I will add, that we'll have to address as well.
Mr. Martin?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, on page eight at the bottom, item I, is a final development plan, 2008-117. It is the Berrycrest subdivision, lots eight and nine. This project is located out on Pasadena Drive on the north side. In this direction on this plan is Nicholasville Road, and to this direction is Regency Road. In this direction, on this plan is Nicholasville Road, and to this direction is Regency Road. It is across approximately from the Payne Clinic parking lot and that large detention basin known locally as the Pasadena Pond. And it's full of goldfish and geese. But the development plan that you see before you is for an office building, a medical office building. They are proposing a three-story building of approximately 18,000 square feet with associated parking, as you can see here. They are also requesting two access points onto Pasadena Drive. They are 24 feet in width, spaced here and here. This is a revised plan, which also shows a future access point up here on the northern end, the northeast corner of the parking lot. And we will address that very specifically with the waiver request that accompanies this plan. When this plan was reviewed, staff, I can't hear you. There we go. There we go. I know it's normally not a problem to hear me, but when I couldn't hear myself, I thought, uh-oh. But again, when this plan was submitted, there was tremendous discussion with staff and the applicant about these access points, their impact on Pasadena, but very importantly, about this point here. Now, that point is integral to a, to a plan that the city has supported, the staff, planning staff, I should say, has supported for quite some time to try to provide alternative access along the north side of these adjoining properties from Huguenard through the backs of these properties towards Regency Drive. And I want to point that out to you up on the photograph that is on... Here is the subject property. Here is the subject property here. Here we have Huguenard Drive, Pasadena, Regency Road with its intersection with Pasadena. Again, here's the large detention basin. The applicant is asking for access approximately here and here. Staff's concern is there's now a daycare developed on this corner. They provided us with a point that would allow continuation of access through here. The applicant, who has also agreed by his revised submission to provide us with the same point of contact here for the connection, gives us the opportunity to continue this. We're anticipating the same opportunity on this property as the childcare center is asking to expand. That will leave us with one intervening property to allow this alternative system to be created. Staff has been very concerned about this for years because of the traffic on Pasadena and the impact that these new developments will have on Pasadena, obviously having been residential at one time and now developing as professional and commercial properties. It was during the course of the review that the need for the waiver became apparent. And, well, I guess I better return to that photograph. I think that'll be simplest. The access point, yeah, the access point here, which you can see here on your plan, is a distance from this intersection to here is 200-plus feet. It does not meet the access standard dictated by our subdivision regs, in this case, 404 feet. So, they're requesting approximately a waiver of approximately half that distance, a little less than that actually. Interesting enough, if you go from Huguenard, it just about meets the accessing standards. And if you were to go from Regency to this point, it just about meets. But this, of course, is your primary intersection, Regency and Pasadena, which carry a tremendous amount of traffic. So, this is the primary intersection we measured in order to evaluate the waiver request. In response to our concerns, the applicant, as I said, gave us a revised plan. They provided us with the stub at the northeast corner of their property or an access point, a future access point. The circulation of the traffic on their site is going to be one-way. This is going to be enter and this is going to be exit-only access points. They have furthermore agreed to our concern about the impact on Pasadena, and they have agreed, again, and in your waiver report, you'll see the condition, that this will be denoted as a temporary access point to be removed at such time that this becomes available to them. Obviously, they don't control the development of the adjoining property. So, that is, that's the difficult part for them, and that constitutes their hardship Staff has reviewed this, and again, you do have a waiver request. It's tan. You have two of them. This is again Berrycrest. I think you have two of the same color, the Berrycrest. And staff is recommending approval both of this plan and the waiver request. And I will say that the subdivision committee recommended approval of the plan as well. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Mr. Penn?
On the two, one in, one out on the Pasadena, are they right-in, right-out onlys? Are they...
They will be, no, sir. That's, they won't be right-in, right-out only. They are, however, just one-way in and one-way out. But the problem with only is the lack of a median.
Right.
And it's very difficult then to control that movement.
Tom, I have a question here. By granting those, those two access points, does that outweigh, not meaning the access requirements from, from Regency? I mean, I'm trying to weigh which one's more important.
Yes, sir. Let's, well, again, let me go to the photograph. Mr. Holmes, we, in discussions with traffic, determined that this was your primary intersection. Therefore, we measured from that right-of-way point back to their access points. This one meets at this end of the property, just barely, but it meets. So, this one became the one that did require the waiver, and staff, along with traffic, felt like this was the key because of the spacing from the Regency Road intersection. And I will add further, you see these offsets across the street? Obviously, there'll be conflict with that, so when it goes away, that'll reduce any potential conflict there as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Martin. I did have one question on what, what means would you control folks turning from Pasadena into that exit only? Is that signage or, I guess, going back to Mr. Penn's comment?
Well, you know, that's, we've not really discussed that particular issue at length. I would think signage would be the appropriate way, along with painting on the pavement particularly. That's the most common usage, that it would be signed indicating that circulation correctly. And I think that would be, of course, subject to development plan approval and enforcement.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions for Ms. Martin? Okay. Patricia?
Tony Barrett with Barrett Partners. We're in agreement with, with Tom's presentation. Just for clarification, I want to, the, the enter-only at, when that other, when the exit is closed, will be two-way. So, that would be our primary access point. And then in the rear would be a, kind of a relief exit entrance and access to Huguenard. So, I just want to make that clarification. The, yeah, anticipate painting on the entrance and, you know, enter-only and exit-only kind of signage at, at both entrances or respectively at each. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Any questions for Mr. Barrett? Mr. Penn?
Tony, when you look at that plan, you have an access easement on the back, on the right side of the plan as I look at it. What's that on the left over there? The same greens found on the left corner?
It's just landscaping. There's a considerable grade difference across our property, and we'll be able to make the access to Huguenard here, but it'll, there'll be quite an embankment.
Drops off too much?
Yeah, it goes up, yeah. Or depending on which side of the hill you're on.
I have a question also. I guess that access where they're, with the one across the street, whether it be conflict, is there any way to line your access up with that to alleviate or minimize that conflict?
They really just aren't lining up well with, with our property lines, and they're, they're so close together that I don't know that it really has a, has an impact.
So, you're saying they're, they're pretty close together in term of line, lining up?
Well, between the two of them, they're, they're close together. They're 36 feet apart, and I'm, I'm just, I can't really get much closer than I am to them without...
I guess what I'm saying, I guess there's an access across the road to that, like Ms. Martin said. A conflict, yeah. How do we line those two up to, you know, at least reduce those, that conflict? Especially if the two are making, trying to make left turns.
I just can't get over to them. I mean, I'm kind of restricted as to the layout of, of my parking lot, and in order to skew over to them, I lose a lot of efficiency. And that's, that's the one it comes down to. And I don't, you know, they're, they're, they're just parking spaces apart from each other, so, you know, if I'm, if I'm lining with the other one, I'm conflicting with the other one, so I don't know that it's, I'm kind of in the middle of them, and that may be, that may be the best because you can see both, both lanes that way.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Barrett? Thank you. I see some folks in the audience. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this application? Okay, thank you. Any additional comment, Tony?
No.
Okay. Mr. Martin, do you have any, anything you'd like to add?
Just perhaps to help clarify on the agenda recommendations to help with any motion. If you should choose to approve this waiver, that would take care of, I believe, number 10 on your agenda. I would, however, like for number nine to remain because we have made it a practice on every plan in this area to be sure that we were very clear about denoting the need for that alternative system and our desire to facilitate its creation. So, we like to keep wording on the plan to that effect, so...
So, you're saying change 10, provide it, provide it with the waiver?
Yeah, I believe the granting of your waiver does resolve the Pasadena access.
All right. Noted as such. Plan DP 2008-117 Berrycrest, we have 10 conditions, deno, changing number nine to say denote the need for access to adjacent properties, and then number 10, provide it, commission grants the waiver to the land subdivision regulations. As noted on the staff report on the tan sheet, staff has recommended approval, and that recommendation is made subject to the following additional requirement that they denote on the plan that the exit-only access point is temporary and will be closed at such time the alternate access is constructed and available for use by subject property. So, with that, we will close this portion of the hearing and turn it over to the commission for any comments and/or motion.
Mr. Chairman, I may say, so, and I'm going to move that we approve the plan at, at our subdivision meetings, of course, our concerns were the two accesses onto Pasadena. And with the fact that now if we can tie in the back and we can reduce that down to one, I think that that's, things move pretty quick, and if that happens, you know, it should take care of the concerns we had as far as our concerns at the meeting. With that, I would move that we approve plan number DP 2008-117 Berrycrest subdivision, 235, 249 Pasadena Drive.
Deleting number 10.
Deleting number 10 or...
Well, changing 10, are you granting the waiver?
Granting the waiver, yeah.
Okay. Okay, okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve, changing number nine to denote, and number 10 to provide, granting of the waiver, which, Mr. Day, your motion did say grant the waiver, correct?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we take five, man?
Yes, sir. Well, let's see.
What do we got later?
I think we have, we have two commissions. Well, we've already covered one commission item. We have one, one other commission item that may, may require some discussion, so we probably should take a quick five-minute break.
Yep.
Okay.
(music)
Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. We have today an addendum, a white sheet that was handed out. This is a land subdivision item. It's a preliminary plan, Plan 2008-2P, Calumet Terrace Subdivision. It's been brought back to you today for a continuing discussion for a waiver request. This plan, and you may recall it because you have seen a record plat on this before, that was subject to a waiver request as well. We're out here on Bally Road, for Sales Roads down here, we're in that bit of that straight stretch as we come up through here. This is the church property, I believe, or that was here, and they sold this property to this church. This is the Catholic church, by the way, that owned this property. The plat that you originally saw was to create this, this lot so it could be transferred from this property owner. The church needed to do that in order to, to take title and secure financing. And it was at that time, that same road that comes in at the back was subject of a waiver granted by this body for substantial completion. They did not have to build this at the time. One of the requirements was that they bring us back a preliminary subdivision plan and show the construction of this public improvement as required. What you see here in terms of information is more in the line of a development plan, which they did take to the Board of Adjustment for approval, again, as it's a conditional use in the residential zone. They've brought this back to you today because during the course of working with the Board of Adjustment, working with some neighbors, they have modified the cul-de-sac. Now what, when the plan's approved, of course, and we approve it subject to conditions, and those conditions include the subdivision regulations, so a standard hammerhead cul-de-sac was what was initially envisioned. It was during this process and working with the Board of Adjustment that the applicant, who did as well work very closely with solid waste and fire and traffic, come up with this modification. The modification works well for the church and in addition, it recognizes the, the neighbor in a body of water, a spring-fed pond that he's got, and they have detention as well that could be impacted by a standard hammerhead cul-de-sac. They worked this out and did not realize at the time that, because they had submitted it to the Board, that this was not a standard cul-de-sac and did require a waiver. Our staff has worked with them, they did submit the waiver request, which, my copy's white, I believe you'll find yours is a tan copy? Yes, yeah, we came out of the copier that way, some were white, we made sure you all got tan copies, similar to the previous one we handed out, but it will, should say Calumet Terrace at the top. You will find upon reviewing that, that staff has recommended approval of the waiver. We do have one condition. It is consistent with a concern that was expressed at the Board of Adjustment. There is a natural area heavily treed and we're asking the applicant do absolutely everything they can to minimize any impact on this area in the construction of this cul-de-sac. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. I did have one question. Since, since we have a condition of this wooded natural area, how is that mapped on this plan? Is there a mapping of that or...?
Unfortunately, it's not well shown on this plan. I think the Board of Adjustment plan showed it a whole lot better.
Did it? Okay.
Which I don't have with me, but it is all in this area, it's heavily wooded.
Okay.
There is going to be some impact from the construction and that's why we are asking that they be required to minimize the impact on that area.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Martin? Thank you, sir. Patricia?
Brian Hill, CMW Architects Engineers. Honestly, Tom said it all. I don't think you all can see this fence right here, but there's, there was a fence that was, that was kind of constructed on the property eons, it goes like a farm fence. And in the field, it's been determined by Jim Redman, Tim Query, us and what have you, that we absolutely can't do anything inside this fence with respect to removing any trees except for a drainage way that we're having to cut down through there. There are, there are tree stands around this area, the intent is to keep everything within reason that we can, but we can't touch anything inside this fence. So to answer your question, Randall, if you can see this fence line, that kind of, that was the demarcation line for that sensitive area from then on, we had to recognize that. But again, Tom said it well and we would ask for approval.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Any questions, Mr. Hill? Okay, you have Plan 2008-2P, Calumet Terrace. We have 17 conditions, as, as indicated. We also have granting of this waiver. Staff has recommended approval of the request of waiver, subject to the maintenance, maintaining the wooded natural area. And I guess, I want to ask Tom, condition 17, is that, that addresses the waiver, correct? Or is that, do we need to add a condition 18, provided we grant the waiver?
The, the condition is associated with the waiver request, the new condition, so with your approval of the waiver, you're imposing that condition.
That condition, okay, great. All right. I see some folks in the audience, but I'm assuming they don't, maybe the press talked about something else, okay. All right.
Chairman, as to your earlier question, we do have the Board of Adjustment exhibit, if you'd like to see the tree information.
Sure, I think, if we could see that. Any questions, Mr. Penn?
Yeah, that brings up a question. Where, where the show the detention basin, do you drain that out into the, where the wooded area is? Is detention basin going to drain that way? Does that impact the pond on the other side of the guardrail?
Let's give you a little, quick little history. Actually, this is kind of an earlier Board of Adjustment plan and then we made some modifications and had to go back to the Board of Adjustment, but it's basically, it's basically the same concept. This particular plan showed the outflow missing the adjoining pond because we were led to believe by the adjacent landowner that they didn't want, they didn't want the water going through their pond. Then they got concerned that there wouldn't be enough inflow into the pond to, to keep it viable, so we had a meeting of the minds one day in the field and walked it and got an agreement and, and actually a request on his part to reroute it and have the water go to his pond. So when we released it, then we went the extra mile, if you will, to be, to sort of do the, the bio swells and slow it down and we've got woodland vegetation and you name it. And that's what I was referring to. The only disturbance through this tree line will be that swath we have to cut through there.
That, thank you, that, that helps me a lot because as a farmer who has ponds and lakes, I can tell you that it doesn't take much to change the composition of that lake for or against either one. So if, if he's aware of that and working with it, that's, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. Any other, any other questions for Mr. Hill? Okay, staff, you have anything else to add? Thank, thank you for the Board of Adjustment exhibit, that was very helpful. Okay, at this time, I'll close this portion of the hearing and turn it over to the Commission for a comment, discussion, motion?
Agree for motion?
Motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of Plan 2008-2P with the 17 conditions and granting the waiver request.
Okay, we have a motion in second to approve Plan 2008-2P and granting the waiver. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I apologize to staff earlier for overlooking the addendum. Okay, I apologize to staff earlier for overlooking the addendum. Now, I believe I'm back on track with the agenda here. We're at commission items, and I believe staff has Item B of commission items that they want to address, so.
Chairman, I think you are directly on track, but if you don't mind, I think if we could take Item B under staff items, there's one more plan-related matter before we get to the matter relating to the courthouse area appeal.
All right, okay. Sorry about that, Mr. Phelps. We'll take your next plan next.
All right, this last item appears on page nine. It's DP 2008-75, East Hills Shopping Center Lot 3A amended. This property located at 540 and 544 Eureka Springs Drive. Purpose of this plan was to add 4,886 square feet of billable area and revise the parking area and circulation and depict the as-built access. This plan was previously approved in June of 2008. One of the conditions of the approval was to secure the manhole within the fenced play area for the daycare. Through the course of preparing this plan for certification, the applicant has indicated that the manhole is not located within that play area, but instead it's shown there and one here. The manhole indicated here, I believe, is a carryover information, piece of information from the previously approved development plan that showed a car wash in this area. Seeing as how that was not built, manholes ended up in this location and this location, and I believe the applicant has confirmed that with our Division of Engineering, and I believe our staff has been to the site as well. Staff is recommending approval subject to eleven conditions, deleting Condition Number Twelve, since that is a condition that they're unable to meet due to the manhole not being in that location. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. This particular plan now comes back to me.
Yes. I thought it might.
I think I'm the reason for Condition Twelve. Okay. Do anyone have any questions for Mr. Taylor? Okay. Petitioner?
Yeah, I don't really have anything to add, but just request your approval of the plan.
Okay, all right. Any questions for Mr. Phelps? Okay, at this time, Chair will entertain a motion or if there's a discussion, by the Commission. Motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of DP 2008-75 with eleven conditions deleting Condition Number Twelve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Thank you. I would like to thank Engineering, Hillard and Bill for looking into this for us. It was quite a task to find the location of those as-built manholes, and they helped out quite a bit.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for the remarks there.
I would also echo those sentiments. The as-bills that Mr. Newman dug up were quite yellowed and showed their age.
All right, okay. Mr. King?
Mr. Chairman and Commission members, I'd like to turn your attention to Item B on page nine, and this is to follow up a discussion that we had back in June, actually, at a work session, talking about the, having an amendment to your meeting and filing schedule to schedule a special date for the courthouse area appeal associated with the center point proposal. We had quite a good conversation, if you recall that day, and set some ideas in place that we're going to run through. But before we get to that, I need to inform you of a couple of things that have happened since we met at that work session back in June. First of all, excuse me, a second appeal was filed. So, now there are two appellants. That has not been widely broadcast, but just before the deadline of the thirty days from the courthouse area board, the Bluegrass Trust for Historic Preservation filed a separate appeal on the project. So, at this point, there are two appeal applications pending. They are all subject to the same guideline. Certainly, we would hear them the same day, but that may have an impact on some of the rules that we were talking about in terms of timing and things like that. As we kind of move through our list of things we want you to address today, we'll have to kind of revisit that and talk a little bit informally perhaps about that. The second thing, I think probably that you are aware of, is that the courts did rule on the injunction request regarding the demolition. And the court did rule in favor of the developer being able to proceed with the demolition, even though the appeal that is pending before you was to that issue. So, if you're not aware, or you haven't been by there lately, demolition of that block has been proceeding along at a fairly rapid pace. And from the appearances of things, likely, the, that issue, the issue of demolition, will basically be completely moot by the time you hear this appeal. Now, that's another thing that may impact the timing of the appeal. We've been in conversation with the appellants, attempting to be in contact with them as to whether, with that change, they do intend to continue with the appeal. And it is our understanding and the information that we have received, yes, that they do. So, our assumption will be that the focus of the appeal will be certainly not on the demolition, but on the nature of the new construction. So, basically, if I, our take is that ninety-five percent of the conversation at the courthouse area design review board hearing was over preservation of those structures or incorporation of those structures into the design, but clearly, that's not going to be possible, and therefore, again, probably completely moot as to a discussion item before the Board. Staff certainly would tend to see it that way at this point in time. So, with those in mind, I think we do know for sure that we had talked about September eighteenth being the hearing date for that special meeting, taking your normal work session date and adopting an amendment to your meeting and filing schedule to have a special hearing on this matter only. We still think with this change that there will be sufficient interest and testimony that you will want to do that. We did talk, though, and had expected perhaps a lot of public input, and we had talked about and asked you all to think about whether you would like to start that at 1:30 in the afternoon, or perhaps, we had talked about probably not in the evening, just given the length of time that we were anticipating. And we had talked about possibly mid-afternoon or something, which, given how long we expected the presentations and principle to be, would allow people probably to come and testify in the evening. Again, with the change in events, and again, with most of the public focus having been on the preservation or adaptive reuse of those existing structures, we just don't have a sense for how many people in the public are going to want to come and speak to this. So, we just wanted to kind of throw that out there. Sorry, we don't have answers. We're throwing more questions at you. As I said, we're going to have to have a little bit of, probably some informal conversation here today to determine what time on the eighteenth that you all might like, would like to set that be.
Okay. Mr. Grabens?
Yeah, I'm going to need to leave. I'm going to a meeting, so the earlier I can leave on Thursday afternoon, the better it'd be for me.
So, your preference is 1:30?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other? Ms. Pen, you have a comment?
The only comment I have, I can make it work whatever that day, but the comment to me was, is that, am I hearing you saying, Chris, that you doubt we'll have a lot of public input? What would be your guess, best guess?
See, that's, we have been struggling with that at all. We've had everything from a lot of comments from people involved with the appeals saying, you know, obviously, that the main concern of their appeal, and again, ninety-five percent of the conversation was moot, but we have no idea.
Well, I guess my question, my question really goes to this point, Chris, and I don't know whether it's the right time on this schedule or not, but I'll just throw it out there. It goes to the point of, are we going to get into process? I mean, how, how open are we going to let this be? And my concern is, is that we get into, we need to do this, we need to do that, we need to do a text amendment, we need to change the process, and I don't know whether that's a smart thing to get into or not. So, I would just like to know how we parcel it.
We have talked about that extensively at staff level as well. It's very clear that no matter what point of view you bring to this issue, and whether you're on the development side, or developer, or the citizens, there is a general recognition that the process, as it's set out in law today, is, does not well serve the kind of situation that we had. And frankly, I think that there will be a number of different groups, this body certainly one of them, that will want to contribute to suggestions on how the process could be improved in the future. I think, though, that that is totally irrelevant to the hearing and the law as it is today relative to the appeal that you are considering, okay? What we are doing as a staff, is we have our conversations about this and develop our staff recommendations on the appeals that are before you. We agreed every time we came up with an idea, we're putting them up here in what we're calling the bullpen, so that when that conversation is engaged, that any ideas that we have generated along the way can be, you know, brought forth. So, and, you know, depending on your point of view, I've heard everything from, we need a completely different process for signature-type projects like this than what we currently have, to, well, the system just needs some tweaks. But I think there is complete consensus that something needs to be done and will be done afterward. But that will no doubt take zoning ordinance, text amendments, which will be its own separate process. So, again, I think it would be a mistake at this point in time to dwell on those kinds of things or have those a part of the hearing, but certainly, I think as soon as, once the case is over, there will be an extensive community discussion about what should we do for the next time.
We're going to limit comment on those type of issues to a later date.
That would be my recommendation to the Commission, that comments to that just would be held to a later date and would not be relevant to the hearing of this appeal.
Okay.
Would it be possible to, you know, when we, whoever puts on this appeal, to tell us what they're really going to appeal? I mean, I know that sounds crazy, but I mean, what I want to get, what I want to get into the fact is, I don't think we need to rehash whether they tore the buildings down and whether it was our fault or whose fault it was. We're only here for the, an appeal. I mean, we can't do anything else. And so, I would like them to tell us, you know, define what this appeal's going to be, so we'll know exactly where you're coming from. Because if ninety-five percent of it was the buildings, and the buildings are gone, then I think that they ought to define that, whoever's going to make the appeal, define that five or ten percent, so that we all know what we're going to be talking about.
Understood. And we have had a conversation about that as well, as we try to figure out whether you should or could, even at this point, say that even testimony as to the preservation of those structures as it relates to this property because of what has happened, is something you would say, I'm sorry, that's not relevant testimony, let's get on to what we can talk about today. I don't know, we haven't had a full conversation yet with Rochelle about that. You know, you certainly hate to limit testimony, but again, at this point, given the ruling of the Circuit Court, it is essentially moot. And again, those, it's clear those buildings will be gone by the time you hear this appeal.
Chris, I don't want to jump in here, but the thought just struck me, if we don't do that, what we've done is we've, and I'm sorry to use this term, but we have created a Humpty Dumpty hearing. You know, we can't put it back together. We can't turn it around. So, my point, is it productive if we don't limit this discussion? How can you have, and maybe this appeal hearing is not supposed to be a productive hearing, I don't know. But I would hope it'd be productive in some area.
Well, it still is productive because, again, there were two facets to the action. One had to do with permission of the demolition of the structures on the property. The second had to do with approval of what goes on to replace them. Again, there was very little conversation, and there's not a tremendous amount in the record, although there is stuff in the record about that second aspect. And that is what is clearly still before this Commission. So, you will basically, as we look at the law, be putting on the hats of the review board in a de novo environment, and we'll hear testimony about what is proposed to be placed on the property and how that comports with the laws and the guidelines that are in place, the yardsticks, as you were, by which whether the new construction is appropriate or not, is to be measured. So, again, that's still a pretty tall order, but again, most of the conversation so far is not related to that.
As I recall, our conversation, whenever ago it was, forever ago, I think I recall that you said that we could, that someone said that we would be allowed to hear new evidence?
Yes. And in fact, since the law specifically, now, I'm putting on law hat, Rochelle should probably comment on this, but the law specifically says that the appeal hearing is a de novo hearing, a new hearing, and you can hear new testimony and new witnesses and new information. Of course, we talked about, given the nature of it and the need for review, after we talk about when we have it, we're going to talk about the time limits, the time limits for submittal of substantive information so they can be reviewed. We talked about all those things at the work session, and we're going to have to revisit those here today. If you are going to go ahead and announce those guidelines, we think it would be good if you did it today.
But doesn't, I'm kind of stupid about law, but doesn't that, doesn't the adding of new evidence change the perimeters for which the appeal is originally made?
Yes, it can. And I think that's one of the...
I don't, yeah, I am really having a hard time with understanding what it is that I, what it is that we're really supposed to be doing and what we're supposed to be hearing, and in fact, what is it that we can decide on? What kind of a decision are we being asked to actually make?
To paraphrase the law, you, again, I think, will be putting on the hats of the review board, and the law says that you must give consideration and do consideration to the decision of that board, but you have the right to have an independent decision on the appeal and therefore indirectly on what is constructed on the property, at least within the area zoned in the courthouse area overlay district, which is...
Which is X number of feet...
A significant portion of the property.
Of the piece of property?
Lynn, you had a question?
I've thought a lot about this, and there are lots of text amendments that need to be made, you know? We need to provide for a stay, you know, within our ordinance if there is an appeal to our decision, because currently, you know, that's what Judge Goodwin had said, was that the law did not provide for a stay, so that needs to be fixed. Is a de novo, I'm not a lawyer, but is a de novo hearing really an appropriate venue? Or should we just be, since the appeal is to the decision of the design board, shouldn't we be looking at their process and introduction? I don't know. But...
And I think that will be an extended conversation after the smoke is...
What I was going to say, though, and I'm probably skipping down the agenda that you provided, Chris, is other things to consider. Barb and I had talked about building heights, because we're supposed to look in context whether what is proposed fits with the rest of that overlay zone. And obviously, building height will speak to it, and Barb had said that...
I've gotten some information from Historic Preservation that has basic, basic height, not specific height, but basic height as far as stories go, figuring stories to be like ten to twelve feet as opposed to maybe eight or fourteen or whatever, and then basic setbacks of the buildings, which most of them are along, are along the street.
I wanted to add to that, and this may be too onerous, given the time constraints, but it would be really nice to be able to have maybe digital photographs, something to put on a PowerPoint that shows the facade of each of the structures...
to put on a PowerPoint that shows the facade of each of the structures that are within, I don't know, a couple blocks...
We'll see what we can get. We're also seeing about other visual...
Historic Preservation, it has everything documented, I think.
Okay.
And we're also looking into other visual aids that, that might be available to put this in context to help, help you all with that decision.
Another question that I had, Randall is an architect and provides the expertise, the rest of us, I think, are going to be looking and, and throwing a little more subjectivity into the, into the, the decision. But will the council have made appointments, and is there a likelihood we will have one other, you know, certified expert who can...
The council did hold their confirmation hearings this Tuesday for your three new members that have been recommended by the mayor. They are on the docket tonight, so we will know after tonight whether the new members will have been approved by council. And then, of course, we, once they are sworn in, yes, they would be available, any new members report, would be available to sit on this, this case.
Well, you know, I would like to say, I think there's obviously others behind this wall that's more than, you know, more than qualified. You know, sometimes it doesn't always take, common sense sometimes prevails over, over expertise. And I'm over, I'm, I'm probably over, over exaggerating that, but I did have a question on...
Certainly.
To me, the whole part of an appeal is looking at information that's in the record, and then also dealing with new information that's introduced. Was the, was the brunt of the inform, was the bulk of the information initially submitted as a result of the first appeal related to the demolition, or related to the new construction? I think you said some of it was, ninety-five percent was demolition, so...
And, and that is one reason why I have not yet...
Copy.
...copied all that information. The cost of that is tremendous.
Sure.
I mean, it is a significant amount of our, our budget. And I wanted to make sure that we were still having appeal before we put the taxpayers' money to that use.
So, so that...
It does appear that, that there will be, the, the appeal will be continuing, and we will go ahead. We have made arrangements, in fact, all those materials are at a printer awaiting me giving them the green light, and I wanted to have this conversation today before I did that.
So that leads me to my next question, to what, you know, the courthouse area review board had information to review, obviously, to make their decision. To what extent, I know we've talked about visuals relative to building heights and things like that, to what extent did they have the information and staff analysis of that data
Right.
to make their own decision? And part of that appeal is what we need to look at?
Yes, we, we have gone through those materials, we had some questions as to whether we, as a staff, based upon our first review through that extensive amount of material, had everything we needed. We had a conference phone call with Mr. Turner late yesterday afternoon, and Ms. Rackers is going to sit down with Darby and/or Kim and go through that and make sure we have everything and know where it is, and to see whether we feel, and, and of course, first to make sure that, that the materials we have reflect what is on the table now, so that we make sure we're starting out at the correct point, because there have been different alternatives presented, different plans proposed, and we want to make sure we're, we're all starting, you know, from the same page.
Right. The only, I guess the only other instance where I think we, as a body, look at conformance with design that I've seen has been similar to the big box. You know, there's a checklist to the big box, and, you know, I, I feel like, you know, we make those decisions relative to that checklist. Is there something similar to that that we can do relative to what's appropriate versus, you know, towards new construction?
Yes, there are adopted guidelines. I wouldn't call them quite as, well, they're kind of hard to characterize, but they are what they are. The law does say that the, the guidelines that were adopted by the courthouse area design review board are the legal yardstick by which the appropriateness of the new construction is evaluated. As in most guidelines, there is wide room for interpretation, to be honest with you. But what we are trying to do as a staff, and one of the things that we see as our role, is to do the best we can to clarify what those relevant guidelines are, and if nothing else, give the commissioners guidance on the kinds of things you need to be thinking about as you make that review.
Okay. I just have one, one concern, Chris, especially with the interjection of new, new evidence. Then it becomes more difficult to make a, a decision on the appeal versus you're, you're almost having a hearing to make a decision. So that sort of troubles me a, a little bit, and how, how do you get new evidence that the, the, the review board has, has not heard?
I know.
We're, we're supposed to call that an appeal on a decision that they haven't reviewed.
I, I understand, and again, I think that, that does fall into that realm of things that are awkward about the legal situation, the law, and the process that we have now that, that clearly strains mightily for all parties when you have something like what has come with the center point. So, again, I think we'll, we will review those kinds of things. I know I've spoken to some commission members that even have concerns about you being the appeal body for these kinds of things. So, you know, all those things will certainly be on the table, but unfortunately, they, they will not be changed, for better or worse. They will not be changed while this particular case is going on, the, the rules will not be changed in midstream. So we will do our best to work under the rules that, that we have and the ordinances that are in place right now.
Chris, I, is, do you want to scroll down your list? And then we'll, then we'll go back to opening question.
Yeah, we can come back if you want, I just, I want to hit some of those things, of course...
So is, is the eighteenth, I think we originally set the eighteenth for gathering of information and so forth, so that's still good, I guess, for the most part?
The eighteenth is about as late as you can do it and, and still meet the requirements of the ordinance, that you, you have the hearing within ninety days of when the, the Design Review Board acted.
Is the commission good with one thirty?
Yeah.
Okay, one thirty?
Okay.
All right. I guess next on this time limit on speakers, since you have two appeals, is that...
Well, it's here, here's what, what happens. We've had this conversation. You had originally suggested that you would give the appellant's, both sides, all sides, an hour and fifteen minutes for presentation of their case in chief and any rebuttal. Now that we have a second appeal, would you give an hour and a quarter to that second appellant? And if you do that, are you going to give the applicant double the time? Because the applicant just raised that question, they feel like they get, they get doubled up on. So, again, you know, this starts to get a little more complicated.
Chris, I just thought about this, and if it's a bad thought, feel free to tell me. You won't be the first one to have. If, if we know the basis of the appeal, appellate A and appellate B, if we know what the basis of their appeal is, and if one of the appeals is basically on the demolition, why would you want to give them an hour and a half to debate a moot point?
Yeah, I think that's right. And, and again, we've not sat down in the room with the attorneys, all three attorneys from all three points of view, and had the opportunity to hash that out, whether, given that one thing is moot, whether they even agree with the fact, you know, that it's moot. And if so, how long do you think you might need to present what you're concerned about now? Again, we're struggling with that. I don't have an answer for you.
I mean, I, I think we have to, at some, some point, you have to give the first appellant that opportunity to appeal. I mean...
Well, I'm not saying they can't appeal, but you want to give them an hour and a half to appeal a moot point.
Well...
I think what we'll do is, you know, you'll give five, seven, just give that hour and a half. Yeah. I think just give them...
So, so is it okay to put a limit on the first?
Can, can we, can we limit it to maybe forty minutes per applicant appellate A, appellate B? Is forty minutes or forty-five minutes per? Because then we're talking...
I'm looking at legal.
I think there may be, especially if you go to a forty-minute limit, I think under ordinary circumstances, you could quite possibly do that. My concern is, in a forty-minute limit, it gives both of the appellant's an opportunity to share out, in essence, an eighty-minute presentation by coordinating their efforts. And then is it realistic to give the applicant only forty minutes to respond to what is, in essence, a joint and eighty-minute presentation? I think there's some validity, if you make it that short and concise, to saying that the applicant may not have a reasonable amount of time to respond. I, I mean, I think eighty minutes, when it's the same issue, maybe would be adequate, but I think the other side may have a problem with that. Whereas if you go up to an hour or so, that's usually considered an adequate time in something like this to give a reasonable presentation, and it gives, gives the applicant a little more time to respond. The other thing you could look at, since there are two applicants, is allotting the, two appellant's, allotting the applicant a little bit of additional time for rebuttal to let him respond to points that may be raised by two different appellant's. The other thing also is if you announce these procedures ahead of time, the, the parties involved would have an opportunity to petition you and justify saying they need more time. And if they could justify that to you, you could make that decision. If they do not ask for more time, then they've accepted it, as long as they've gotten some notice ahead of time, so that may be another way to address it.
I, I want to ask, and I'm sure you've asked, thought about this, same project, two appeals, is, is there the logic, can the two appeals, the clock started on the first appeal at that date, ninety days out, right?
Well, the ninety days is from the courthouse area, it's not from the filing of the appeal.
It's not, okay, okay.
So basically, since they have thirty days to, to file, we had essentially sixty, a sixty-day window on the second appeal. The first appeal came rather early, but the second one was like, I think, the day before the, the thirty-day deadline.
Now, have this ever happened, has this ever happened before?
No. And again, I think sometimes the only, only way you, you find flaws in a system is when it gets strained to the maximum, and certainly this case is straining the, the process and the laws that are in place to the maximum, and...
Chris, it's ninety days from the filing of the appeal that they have.
Sorry. And then the question is, if we have two appeals, would you have another thirty days to hear? I, I don't think you want to hear them separate.
We don't want to go there.
So I think, I think you want to...
I think the problem is, if you tried to extend it beyond the eighteenth, you'd end up having to have two hearings, because you have to have, the first appeal that was filed has to get its hearing within ninety days.
I, I guess that's where I was kind of headed, to separate them out, and not, not, not group, really, which can get to an extended discussion about process on the first appeal side, and process even on the second appeal side. So my thought was, you know, if, if it's a moot point, you can set the limit, forty minutes, whatever it is on the first appeal, hear it.
I think that's a, a legal option you would have.
And then hear the second appeal.
I think my concern, and, and we looked very carefully at that first appeal that was filed and the wording in it, and there was only one motion made by the courthouse area design review board, that one motion approved both the demolition and the construction. So since that was done in one action, arguably, any appeal filed has appealed that motion in full. There could be some fault possibly found in the first appeal because it did not succinctly state the reason for appealing the construction. But I also am not real comfortable in saying, you didn't appeal the construction, you only appealed the demolition, because it was done in one motion. So that's not a very clear issue. So I would anticipate even the first appeal is still going to be able to present its reasons and arguments as to why the proposed construction is not in compliance with the guidelines.
Okay, that is a good point.
I mean, I think restricting any testimony on demolition is definitely something that we need to look at, as that is a moot issue, and we need to look at the, the case law and do some research on whether this body even has to consider that. I have not looked at it, that is a possibility, but I, I think that, that you are going to have to let even that first appellant probably address the construction issue if he chooses to do so.
And, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying that we, we don't allow them to do that, I'm just saying, we're, we're trying to treat it, and I understand resources, time, you know, this thing needs to be reviewed by our body, but I'm just saying that to, for simplification, if, if the way we've, this has fleshed out and has created something that's never happened before, one way to obviously simplify it is to look at it as two separate.
Something else to think about is, both appellant's know that the demolition is a done deal. Okay? And to appeal that decision, we have to go to appellate court, yes?
I guess that's correct, and, and to my knowledge, no appeal...
So demolition, the demolition question is not for this body. And if we do impose time limits on each appellant, whether it's in two separate hearings, two different, you know, dates, they know they've got a limited time, so they're going to only speak to the relevant issues. Again, recognizing, I think it's going to be self-limiting, I think is what I'm, where I'm going with this. But I also wanted to ask, in filing those two appeals, did each applicant deliver a letter, a portfolio, a brief, something that gives...
A letter.
...gives a more specific rationale, you know, so that we have an idea as to where they're headed?
Basically, a letter. It was not extensive information.
No, nobody tipped their hand, so to speak?
Well, I mean, we'd be glad to provide you with copies of, of what we've received.
I guess, my question's kind of like Randall's, are, are we able to put two appeals together if they're coming from two different bodies?
I think you can hear them the same day.
Yeah, and the one, the one is based partially on, the second one's based partially on the first one, is what he states in the letter, the very last sentence in the letter says something about, this is based also on Preserv Lexington's appeal, that's part of the grounds.
And then that's the other thing, even if you separate them, the other party, since it's a de novo hearing, would have the right to come and testify. They may be subject to any limitations that you put on it, but they, they would have the right to appear.
Okay. Randall, what my concern is, if you try to parcel them out, you're going to hear the same thing twice. Because they're not going to separate that, no matter how you start down this road, the key points that they want to bring up, either appellant, because of the motion that's done, and also because the fact that they tied it out, each tied to the other one, if you parcel it out, you're going to have two hearings of exactly the same information. I mean, that's just, I just believe that's the way it'll go, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's an easy way out of this. We just hold the hearing, allocate time for them, and, you know, move on with it. And, you know, if it's going to be, if you need to give them an hour piece, give them an hour piece, give the applicant adequate time to do it. I mean, we, we can't, there's no easy way of getting around doing it, so I'd say let's do it.
Well, I, I want to go back to law's suggestion about additional rebuttal time. You said it earlier about if we put a limit on the, the appeal, the appellant's, then maybe there's additional rebuttal time, that we, we expand that window of rebuttal time. Is that...
Yeah, I don't think it would have to be much. I think if you gave the applicant an additional fifteen minutes, if he needed it on the rebuttal phase, in other words, he would not, if you limit everybody to an hour, he can't do a presentation, initial presentation of an hour and fifteen minutes, he would only be able to have additional time on rebuttal. And when he's facing two parties opposing him that each have an hour total, I think that that's reasonable. I don't think those parties would have any basis to complain at his having a little bit of additional time either.
Okay. So where, where are we now?
Well, given, here's a suggestion. Given where we are, would you allow each party, official appellant and the applicant, forty-five minutes for case in chief? And, and give the appellant, or not the appellant, give the applicant the possibility, give each of them fifteen minutes for rebuttal, and give the applicant up to thirty minutes if they needed it for rebuttal, since they would have to rebut against two different groups? Would that seem like a fairly level playing field?
And as law says, they can come back and petition if they, at some point, need more time.
Right. We would put this out, and of course, if, if someone wanted to come and question that, they would, could do that in your meeting in two weeks.
Okay, all right.
We will certainly forward any information based on the actions you take today, as soon as we can put it together, to the, the parties. And I think with... And I think with the, the change in the nature, staff would certainly suggest that three-minute limit would be appropriate for citizen testimony.
You could kind of leave that discretion to the chair, when he kind of surveys how many people's going to be there to speak.
That's correct.
I think we'll have signage sheets, I'm sure, which...
Yeah, but I mean, if you see there's a few people, and you want to bump it to five, well, you know, that's your priority.
We could, we could say that...
You don't, that's your priority, too.
I, I would like, at the end of the day, a full, a full contingent to make a decision, rather than we all exit one by one, but I think that's a good idea, three, three to four. Keep it a half. So are we down to other things to concern?
So we would say, if it's put out there, the chair, at this time, the commission intends to restrict testimony, general testimony from the public, to, to three minutes. However, at the discretion of the commission, pending additional time may be allowed that day. Would you like us to express it that way?
Yes.
As we put it out there, or just leave it, leave it at three minutes, and they just know that you can, fine. Keep it simple.
Certainly.
Yes, sir. We did talk about submittal of substantive information. That was one of the things that was an issue at the courthouse area design review board, in that a major packet of information was brought in less than twenty-four hours by, by one side. We had talked about twenty-one days, I don't think we want to use business days, I think we'd just say twenty-one days, be three weeks, which we are getting close to, given the fact that we couldn't have this conversation before today, because of quorum issues. The twenty-one days for submittal of information in, in ten days, to allow the other side, it would have to be in, basically, everything would have to be in no later than ten days before the hearing. Give us at least some time, as a staff, to review and comment and incorporate that into our recommendations and information that we will present to help you through this decision-making process.
Chris, I would say that would be for all parties?
Yes, this is all parties.
So we're close, both appeals end up, what happens, that'd be twenty-one days?
Anything new, twenty-one days. And the other side, whichever side that was, if they wanted to put information in, in rebuttal, in terms of substantive new materials, it would be ten days, obviously, comments that would be made without those written materials, you know, would not be subject to that. But any reports, technical information. Again, there may not be as much of that, given that a lot of the focus of the first hearing was as to the economic feasibility of incorporating those existing structures into the project, and there was extensive information and complex information and conflicting information from both parties on that. But again, it appears at this point, that will be moot. But that does not mean that someone couldn't bring in a whole set of architectural renderings or suggestions and things like that, that would need to have some review. And again, just for the, the last point, was just one that we had carried over from the work session conversation, as to whether, you know, what kinds of things you would like us to try to do as a staff to help you with this decision. You know, we have talked about that, again, as a staff, and certainly will be doing our best to illuminate what the guidelines are and how the applications may or may not comport with those. As you know, that's going to be a level, I mean, it's going to be a tough playing field. And again, you had indicated that you did want us to give a definitive thumbs up or thumbs down, as a staff recommendation. If that's still the way you feel, we will do our, our best to achieve a recommendation of that type.
You wanted the staff to give a thumbs up or a thumbs down?
Yes, a thumbs down.
Yes, please.
Your recommendation, not just either one.
Oh.
Right, right. But again, we do see as one of our roles, and again, because we're dealing with guidelines which can be interpreted by reasonable minds in different ways, to be honest with you, even amongst the staff and amongst the commission and amongst the community, clearly, that's, that's what's been going on. So we will do our best to do that, but we do feel that our, our prime mission is to, as best we can, illuminate the guidelines, illuminate the yardsticks, illuminate what criteria you are to be using, so that if nothing else, we will try to help you through that maze, as we try to work through it ourselves.
Okay. Is everyone in agreement?
Yeah, Chris, I, I would hope that the role the staff should play, if you should get something within the twenty-one days in the rebuttal, that you evaluate that based on the appeal. Because if we wade through all the testimony of the previous hearing, and ninety-five percent of that is on the demolition part of it, we're going to get, or I'm going to get brain lock. I mean, when I get down to the point where I need to really be realizing something, I, I've absolutely had brain lock. So if you want to help us, or if you want to help me, let me just talk about me.
You want to help everybody.
If you want to help me, and you get the request within twenty-one days and/or the rebuttal, that's pretty critical to me, for your all's evaluation of that. It's probably more critical for me than your evaluation of the, of the earlier part.
I think that would be good, also, I want to chime in. I think to, to filter through, even though we need to look at, as a body, that information, but be able to filter through and filter through in a timely fashion, much like we do on a weekly basis, all the information we receive, so.
So can you decide an hour per?
Forty-five minutes.
Basically, an hour per, with the guideline being forty-five minutes for case in chief, fifteen minutes for rebuttal, and the petitioner, if they need it, because they have two different groups, that they could go up to thirty minutes with their rebuttal. Staff will also observe the, the forty-five minute rule. But you get to ask us questions, you can anyway.
Did, did we pick up?
The clock stops for questions.
Did we pick up the comment Len made earlier about the visuals, I guess, in terms of appropriateness? Did we, did we talk about some of the visuals?
Some of the visuals, yeah. When we talked at work session, I know Ms. Phillips, in particular, was asking for information about other structures in the district.
Right, right.
And we have already had conversations with historic preservation about that. You have requested some photographs. I don't know that we can document every building in the, in the district, but we may have that. But we're also looking at what might be out there currently, in the way of other visual materials, models of downtown, perhaps, that we could, you know, use to help everyone see the context of the proposal.
Okay.
We don't have it.
Well, maybe the, maybe the applicant has some of that, I mean, that's the software of, of today. Is it? Okay. All right. Oh, yes.
We will use whatever tools that we can find to help everyone see this.
Software of the future. Say that, would you say it again now? Not to put you on the spot, I want to hear that.
Since it's a de novo hearing, I mean, it's, it's possible that the applicant could come with a whole new design, isn't it?
Well, you know, this is probably the wrong time to talk about this, but, you know, different actions could have different implications. If you uphold the appeal, that means that the application, as it was, is denied. That doesn't mean the project is dead, it means that the, you know, somebody has to, the applicant technically would go back to step one, and could put a different proposal in front of the courthouse area design review board. I don't know if that would be a possible outcome, versus you all having to approve a set of, of a document. There, there are different things.
I, I think a de novo hearing, they can present new evidence, but it's still a hearing, an appeal of the application that was submitted to and heard by the courthouse area design review board. I don't think in, in any way, the expectation is that there would be a major changed application that would have, in essence, its first step before the planning commission. I think that there could be like some minor tweaking, as we call it, in response to the appellant's contentions. But I think any major redesign, if that redesign was because this board felt that the original design and application did not meet the guidelines, then that's basically upholding the appeal and reversing the granting of the permit, and, and as Chris said, they would start back and have to submit a new application and new drawings and go through the appropriate channel.
I have another question. Since I've never been through this procedure before, I don't guess really any of you have. What is the procedure, once we have all, we have heard from all the parties represented? What is the, what is the procedure for this body? You can ask questions, do we have the opportunity to have an executive close, I mean, can we do anything in closed session? Do we have an opportunity to discuss it? Do we make a yea-nay on the spot? Do we, I mean, what is, what happens?
It has to all be done in open session. In essence, this is, the standards and everything are exactly the same as the appeals you hear from the board of architectural review.
Okay.
Exactly.
It's just a different set of guidelines.
Just thought I'd ask.
It is, you will be wearing your quasi-judicial hats on this.
Okay, that's...
Put it in a similar context, on a much, much broader, broader scale.
Yeah. But I also, because we do wear that quasi-judicial hat, it's important, I think, as a commission member, to be careful what you say in the public.
Well, I, you know, I would hope no one has, I will say, personally, I have, people have approached me, and I would hope everyone recognizes you can't say anything, opinion or not, please.
Not without jeopardizing potentially your vote, which is...
This, this, that's the force. So it's been very hard for me, as an architect professional, and sitting on the commission, who has, obviously, an opinion, but you just, please, not say anything, so.
Randall, to follow up on that, it's not a question, I mean, it is a question of what you say, but it's also a question of what you hear. And, and I think what I'm going to try my best to do, and that's all I can speak for, is that I'm just not going to discuss this with, with people in the public or whatever. I'm, it's not that I don't have an opinion, it's not that I don't read the newspaper, it's just if you ever start discussing this, one side or the other, or whatever it is, pretty soon you get to the point to where you're a lobbying agent, and you, you don't want to be that. And so I, you do it however you all want to do it, Randall, and I certainly take your counsel very, 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 very seriously. But I think it's as much of what you, what you hear is what you say, and...
Well, it's like, it's like anything that we hear. You can't, without, in an open hearing, you can't talk about it. There's just, there's no, I think Dr. Cooper used to put it to me best, always, have nothing to say. So...
Doug, he's been trying to say something.
I, I know, I'm, I'm going to recognize, any other questions up here? Ms. Graves.
Is there a chance that the appeal on the demolition could be rescinded, I guess, by the applicant?
By the appellants?
Yeah, appellant.
Yes, and...
I spoke with both of them, both of the attorneys, and they both said they realized that the demolition thing is a moot point, but they still want to go forward with the appeal, as far as the construction goes.
The attorney said that?
Both of them.
Well, I mean, is there, then is there, does this board have to accept any of, any of these appeals? Could we say, we don't feel like that appeal has, you know, we don't hear that the buildings are on the ground? I mean...
Well, you, you must hear the appeals. I do think, though, that if, if it's understood that the demolition issue is moot, I think clearly, the commission can state, and I think the chair can enforce during the hearing, when testimony goes in that direction, and say, this is not relevant testimony, given where we are today. Thank you, please move on to the issue that is relevant today.
I need a, I need a, a timekeeper here, who's, Len's our timekeeper, okay. Chris, did we cover your list? I know Mr. Turner's wanted to say something.
Certainly, I think you've covered everything that we had. We will need you to take an action after you have gotten this. We'll, we'll kind of do a recap summary, and then, again, as we said, whatever you decide today, we will do our best to get that information out.
Okay. Mr. Turner, you had something you wanted to add?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And it's just a question for procedure, more than anything else, and that is, what's the order of presentation? And when is, who gets rebuttal when?
I hadn't thought about that to this point, I guess.
That's kind of relevant to the time.
And actually, that was one of my lead questions earlier, who is the lead appellant? And I'm assuming it's the person that filed, the first appellant?
Right, I assume it would be staff doing an overall presentation, and then the two appellants, and then the applicant, and then appellants rebuttal, and then applicants rebuttal.
Okay.
Would that sound correct, counsel?
Okay, all right. Yes, see?
That's all important, staff gets the last comments. But we do need, if there is staff rebuttal on anything that either side said, we need that. Staff presentation first, then the two appellants, in the order in which they filed. The applicant, as we'll call, the center point developers, would get to present their case in chief. There would be then rebuttal by the two appellants to anything that the applicant said, and then the applicant would have their time, up to thirty minutes, to, to rebut the, the time that the others had.
Or the citizen, citizen, how about?
And then, oh, pardon me. I think we should, let's, let's think about that, because there'll be citizens on both sides of the question as well. I think before we get into rebuttal, then clearly, after the, the two, and the case in chief, so after the applicant has had their forty-five minutes, we would take testimony, typically, as we do, testimony from those in favor of the appeal.
Mm-hmm. It's going to be the reverse.
Reverse somewhat, right.
For what we're accustomed to.
And then take testimony from the public, I'll say, on the applicant's side, in opposition to the appeal. And then the rebuttal, as we described it, and, and staff rebuttal, and then commission Q and A. And vote.
Sounds like it works for me. Is that, commission, commission understand? Okay. Now, you said earlier, take action on this, what you've presented to us, is that...
Yes, you, you certainly will need to take action to amend the meeting of filing schedule, to create the date and time for the special hearing.
Okay.
And the others, I, I would appreciate you taking an action, saying you support what we have outlined, as the guidelines for the hearing, and staff will put those in writing and publicize them to the best of our ability, to interested parties and the public.
Okay. Is there a motion to set the date and the time, as well as offer support for the staff going forward with what's been discussed and presented today?
You need a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the order of, that we adopt the recommendations that we have made today for this hearing on Center Point, de novo hearing on Center Point. We have it on September the eighteenth at one-thirty, and we adopt the, the additional restrictions and, and order of...
Proceedings.
Proceedings.
Okay.
Both for the hearing and for the submittal of the written information for review.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt recommendations as presented by staff, set the date for September eighteen, at the point of time of one-thirty, and to move forward with the proceedings as outlined. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I believe that's it. Well, well, before I say, is that it? Mr. Sal... Mr. Sally, is that it?
To the best of my knowledge and belief, Mr. Chairman.
That's it. Okay.
Thank you, Darby.
Okay. All right. Well, there's no further business. Is there a motion for adjournment? Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Meeting adjourned.